Before we begin tonight's meeting, I thought if the board would allow that we would take a brief moment of silence in honor of Kelly Devine. Kelly was a teacher with us here in the New Canaan Public Schools for about 15 years, worked 12 years over at Saks and the past three here at the high school. She passed away unexpectedly on the weekend prior to our spring break. So services were held for Kelly on Wednesday and Thursday of last week. But as you know, certainly it was our spring break and students and teachers and others were traveling different places. Made today a tricky day for us to return, certainly, a sad day for our staff, for our teachers, for our students and parents and everybody else. But the staff and our students supported each other throughout the day. Although it'll be tough in the next couple of days, I think that based on what I saw today, I know that that support will continue for our students, for our staff, for our whole community. I spent the day today in Kelly's classes with Chris Bonerigo, who is returning to work with us for the remainder of the year and to teach Kelly's classes, and Sandy Workington. And the students, one of the things we did was talk a little bit about Ms. Devine and their memories and ways that she may have reached them in their classes. And they used words such as caring, dedicated. Students told stories about her sending them texts on days they weren't in school to make sure they were okay, or even a quick text, "Good luck on a test in another class," and things like that. Really someone who cared very deeply about her kids, not for any benefit of her own, just because she was just that dedicated and passionate about her work. They described her to be overly happy, and I love the overly happy part. I think that was Kelly. And a mentor, supporter, and friend. So I just thought tonight, before we begin our agenda, if you don't mind, we'd take a moment of silence in memory of Kelly and of her selfless contributions through the years to the children and family here of New Canaan. Kelly left a very powerful and lasting legacy here at the high school. We're going to miss her quite a bit, but we also know we're lucky to have known her and worked with her when we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watzke. Okay. I'd like to call the April 18th meeting of the Board of Education to order. The first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of our April 4th meeting. If you could all take a look at your minutes and when you've had a second, if I could get a motion to approve those minutes. Sherri?
Let me have a second. Sangita? All those in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. One abstention. And, okay, so those are approved. If you could take a look at the agenda and if I could get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Penny? A second. Hazel? All those in favor? Is it unanimous? Okay. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. The first item on our agenda is the New Canaan High School Beautification Project presented by the high school PFA.
Yes, and as they step up to the podium here, I want to say thank you to Jen, Kristen, and Leslie for joining us tonight. The PFA, the group, presented to the Board of Selectmen a couple of weeks ago, and I thought that it would be wonderful as well for them to present to you tonight to give an overview of the beautification project that's underway. It has been quite an effort so far, and it's very exciting to see some of the great work that they've already, that they've been doing already come to fruition. You might have noticed the planters in the front walkway there as you came in. You may also have noticed the new bike racks that are there, and they'll talk a little bit about that. And I really, I want to credit the PFA and Jen and Kristen for their leadership in this because this, they really took a look at the building and said, "It's time to build some more pride in our New Canaan High School and to make it look like this, on the outside as good as we know it to be on the inside." And so they've been working very hard on this and doing a wonderful job for us. I thought the board would like to have a quick overview of the effort so far. Jen?
Well, we can't take all the credit for noticing it needed work. When our new principal, Bill Egan, started in July, he complimented the students and the staff and all the many great things that we do here, but he did point out the grounds weren't quite what he expected. And Kristen and I... True. And Kristen and I said, "Okay, you have a point, but we've got a lot to do in September with our annual membership drive." So we tabled it, we tabled discussions until October. So the first thing we did in October was we took a tour of the high school. We walked around and we took photos. And it is harder to see in here than the Board of Selectmen's conference room. But you can see, if you look at that first picture of the main wall on Farm Road, there's just a lot of staining and there's plant weed residue left on the walls. And then that's the theater wall with the tree in front of it, and there's, I guess, weeds at this point. There's a weedy bed. It's just totally overgrown and nobody's maintaining it. And then if you look at the front circle where we've got the black urn, the urn doesn't really fit the size of the circle at all, and it's just overgrown with weeds. The slobs do make an attempt to weed, to weed that, but it happens once or twice a year and it's not anywhere close to enough. And then if you look, that picture where you see the two flags, that's standing from the front of the school and looking out. And you can tell by looking at it that it's just, the plants are too small. You actually can't see in that photo, but the boxwoods are dying. They're, they're full of brown and they're not even, they're not even fully boxwoods anymore. And then the last picture is a memorial garden outside of the library that just, it's not maintained. It does have irrigation, but nobody weeds it, nobody cares for it. So what we decided to do was we formed a beautification committee. Basically, I emailed a bunch of people that I knew that I thought might be interested, and people really responded. They were really interested. So, and we recruited the awesome Leslie Cameron, and we met as a group a few times and set some goals. We decided that our main goal was to start by improving the appearance of New Canaan High School with new projects like banners, bike racks, and flower beds. All of those things we've done. The banners, obviously you've seen them. The bike racks we installed a couple of weeks ago, well, Bob Willoughby's guys installed them a couple of weeks ago. The flower beds, they were just installed over the vacation, and they are irrigated. They're fully irrigated. And those things were mostly done from funds that the PFA donated from reserves that we had been carrying and we no longer have. And then we decided we had to work on improving the maintenance of New Canaan High School. So to that end, I started calling Rob Malazzi and Nick Williams and Brian and emailing Bob and trying to figure out who was responsible for what at the high school. And it became clear that while the town was responsible for the curb out, they had no budget to maintain it, and they openly acknowledged that they really don't maintain it with any regularity. So at that point, Brian and Rob talked, and they decided, starting in July, there's going to be a small budget to maintain our project and other projects like it around town like Lappam and Saks. So we do finally have a budget to maintain, to maintain our landscape, which is a big step forward. So after having really worked on that, we decided that, after a meeting with Leslie, that we could really take it to the next level and install beautiful, professional landscapes, similar honestly to what they have at high schools that we compete with. So we broke it into phases to hopefully be able to at least get Phase 1 done, and if we're, you know, able to fundraise, get Phase 2 done. So Phase 1 is $35,000, and we plan to install that this spring before graduation. And Phase 2 is $30,000, and we're planning to install that as funds are available. And then a last part of our goal is to install or to maintain our new landscape installation. And we have the town committed and Leslie's committed to helping make sure that happens. So...
So this is just to show you a little bit of how we started. We figured we'll start where we can make the greatest impact, and this is the garden right in the front of the school. The Beautification League of New Canaan had actually helped with this when the school was refurbished years ago. So they came and they gave us some ideas, and then we worked with Justin De Felice, who's a local landscaper, and he mulched it. It was full of leaves. He trimmed a lot of the shrubs, and then under Leslie's guidance, he moved some of the big ones down to the center of the school, to the sophomore courtyard. That's where there's a little ram, and we'll show you a picture of that. Then later, the Beautification League came and planted 200 yellow and purple bulbs, tulips, so they should be coming up very shortly. This was done on Thanksgiving, so you can see, so it was done quite quickly and something that everyone could see right away. And then hopefully you've seen the banners. Those were for school spirit, and we were able to get those delivered the first week of December, just in time for the state football game. So that was very exciting, and we've received a lot of great comments that it really, it looks like a college campus, and a lot of the kids have really noticed that, which is quite fun. We've also ordered and installed these refilling stations. There's eight around the school, and we got the Booster Club to participate in this as well. So you'll see them by the gym and down in the athletic area, as well as in the other parts of the school. And then the bench, there's one bench now, and we've ordered two more. They should be arriving shortly. I was at the school today, just after lunch, and you would not have believed all the kids that were sitting out there on, you know, just on the floor. So I think it'll be really exciting to see that these things that we've ordered really will be used and will make a difference to how the front of our school looks. And then, of course, the bike racks, I call the one on the left a wiggly piece of tin, and that's now moved. We're still using it. It's gone down to the athletic area, but we've got these great new circular bike racks. And today, I think there was like 10 or 15 bikes that were there. So again, something that really gets used, and it's just nice, new, and modern. And then this is the front of the school, which Leslie will talk about, the improvements we're doing here.
So the aesthetic concept for the plan is just to bring in a lot of bold sweeps of plant material to help balance the scale and severity of our architecture and try to make it look a little friendlier and more welcoming and greener. So these are a couple of different illustrations of the idea, which is to bring in some trees and large shrubs to create sort of a canopy effect, and then some lower growing shrubs, grasses, perennials, so that you still have sightlines going through. We had to take into some, you know, some practical concerns of safety issues and being able to see through the plant material, but still wanting it to be big enough to work with the scale of the building. Having everything low maintenance was another big concern, so a lot of the plant material will not need any pruning, and then there are a number of things that will have to be cut back, late winter, early spring. So trying to pick plants that will be a pretty simplified maintenance schedule. So, and again, choosing things that have multiple seasons of interest. So there'll be some evergreens out there, have green all year, things that'll be a little more lush and wide growing than the little stiff boxwood balls that we have now. And then a number of plants with berries. The berries will hold through much of the winter, some red twigs, and then some things that'll bloom in the spring and even late winter, really early spring. So that's the plan. You may have noticed little pockets as you walked in. I was talking to a high school senior today, and she was saying that she and her friend were walking and saying, "I think these might be new. They are new." So even the kids are noticing, which is great. And then this is the athletics department, which we're hoping to be able to get to next. Right now, there's just, there's so much hardscape, those great big brick walls. So the idea is to just to bring in some plant material, a lot of evergreens, to soften
So we're planning to begin the maintenance for several areas around the high school. Well, we're going to meet with John Howe and some of the various people to figure out exactly what will be done and what won't be done. Then we have a couple parent volunteers who are going to coordinate with Boy Scouts, Eagle Scouts, and slobs to fill in whatever gaps. And Leslie's committed to maintaining it as long as Theo's here, which I think provides four or five years. And then I guess last, just so you know where we're at, well, I saw you look, the sophomore courtyard, the kids call the sophomore courtyard that courtyard with the ram. For some reason, only sophomores sit in there. And then there's a courtyard on the back of the school that's called the senior courtyard. To my knowledge, the juniors don't have a courtyard. Or the freshmen?
Freshmen go up front.
Yeah. So the sophomore courtyard, we would like to get to that eventually as well, but it all depends on fundraising. At this point, we've raised 43% of our goal, which really is enough for us to commit to installing the front plaza, the front circle. You know, depending on how much money we raise, ultimately will depend on the size of the plant material and everything that we can do, but we definitely, we, it's on your agenda to recognize our donation. That's for the irrigation and the installation of the plant material. And then we're going to buy the plant material as it becomes available. So we are, we've done the front pockets. We are committed and ready to do the front circle, and then you all should have gotten our mailing. It went out on Friday, and you all should have received it in your mail today. And we're hoping, you know, we'll get to our goal and be able to install the whole project and maybe a few extras we haven't called out yet. We'll see. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, and the sketches look beautiful. So are there any questions from the board? Penny?
I was so excited to see this project when you sent the email. I think it's absolutely fantastic, and it's what the high school needs. So I appreciate all your effort and, and work on it. I think everything already looks a lot better, and it's just going to improve from here. So I so much am excited about this. What I was trying to look up online, so it's not good to do in a meeting, is I think that there are some guidelines, maybe you already are all aware of these, on school safety, infrastructure, that's set by the state. And I think that they, I don't know how much they touch on plantings, but it's the same type of thing that you were talking about, visibility and not creating spaces where anybody could look. So all I would suggest is somebody, I mean, I should track them down, or somebody in the school should track them down so you have them, because I would hate to see something go up that might not...
Well, we did have, our first step was to make a loose plan and meet with Brian, who reviewed everything and considered it from a security standpoint. And then he asked us as a next step to meet with Jason Kim. And so Leslie and I and Kristen met with Jason Kim, and we took the plans and we walked around all the front plaza, considering all the various plant heights and making sure there was a sightline. And then he approved the plan. And then we talked to Veronica Leduke, who's also on the Security Committee, who also did a review of the plans. So we had approval for the, from the Security Committee before we went to any fundraising.
So then, oh, I just want to double check that the, somebody on the Security Committee had actually looked at the rules as they might relate to plantings. I mean, it sounds like you guys have gone through all the right steps. So it's just, I'm just throwing that out there, not to change any plans, but I would hate to see something arise later.
Sure. And my understanding is that Jason Kim, he's our SRO here at the high school, did review the security specs and everything and looked at it through that lens. And let's validate, let's make, double check, triple check that to be sure, and we'll go from there. It's great. It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sherri?
So I also just want to echo, I think this is a brilliant proposal and so well-designed and communicated. And I think the, what you've already implemented, the banners, the planters, have already made a significant positive impact on kind of the view of the school. I do think that generates more pride with the students and with the community. I just had one question about the actual fundraising. I did receive the mailer today, which also, very well done, professional, amazing. Was that sent to only New Canaan High School parents or the broader community? And then related fundraising question is if there's an opportunity to involve the students in the fundraising for this project?
Well, as far as having it go to the broader community, we are hoping to get articles in the papers, and we did, Brian did give us permission to email our e-blast to all of the other PTC presidents. So each one of those schools did commit to sending the e-blast out to everybody, but we don't have access to the mailing list to send it to the entire New Canaan Public School Committee. We just have access to email. Maybe that's okay, because most of us are on our email all the time. So right now, we're emailing, but not hard copy mailing the whole community, but we, our mailer only went out to the New Canaan High School. We did go through our list, the PFA passed donors, and we sent them to past donors who maybe didn't have kids in the school any longer because we had their contact information from past donations.
Right. And the reason I ask that question is because I think what you're doing impacts so many people, whether you're inside the school or on the soccer fields or, and I think there could be a broader community that's, you know, could be interested in supporting this project. And even if we could hard mail it to the current eighth grade population, that's another 350 families that, you know, are up and coming.
It's true. We did apply for two grants that are community grants, but it's true. I think, I think even alumni, people who've graduated and moved to different areas would be interested in having our high school look better. We don't know how to access them. This has generated a lot of talk amongst us and the boosters as far as how do we keep an alumni database so that we can inform, you know, the people who haven't lived here for five years but still love their high school? So I think there are a lot of things we can do. At this point, we're taking the traditional route, which is the email and the mailer, but if we're still needing to meet some goals... Forgot that?
And then what about getting the students involved?
And what about getting the students involved? We haven't really come up with a good plan for getting the students involved, but that's an excellent idea.
I mean, like the Scholarship Sunday idea of empowering them, you know?
Yes.
To help with this project.
It is, and we're involving the students on the maintenance end, but we didn't consider involving them on the fundraising end, but it is a good idea and something we certainly can think about. Goodness knows we have enough meetings to discuss it.
But thank you for everything you're doing.
Well, thank you for your support.
Hazel?
I just wanted to say, this is such a magnificent idea, and you've taken the concept and really investigated every part in such a thorough way. And the idea of having the outside of the school be looking so nice is helpful to everybody that comes in and out, because it lifts their spirits. There's so much research about what happens with gardens and with landscaping and what it does to people, and it's whether or not it's the students, but parents, or it's the staff and the teachers, it will lift all of them as they come in and out, as they see something better than what's been there in the past. Not that it wasn't okay, because I'm sure somebody did some work before, but it's hard to keep up. And I think the suggestions that you're getting are good ones, and I, I didn't know exactly, have the other gardening groups in town, are they aware of this great project? Is anybody, they've already got projects, I know, but maybe they might be interested in putting it on a future agenda, helping.
Well, one of the very first things we did was called the Beautification League members, Kristen's neighbors in the Beautification League, and they actually met with us and...
At the front garden, they met with us and told us what was there and...
Gave us the history.
Yeah.
And they helped us figure out how to get the irrigation going.
Right. And they gave us the contact, Justin De Felice, and then he has a lot of local contacts so he can get mulch from the town, and that's actually proven to be very helpful. And then, as I mentioned, they did come back and they had a gift from Chris Shipper, who's the chairman of the land trust.
Can you, can you come to the mic? Can you come, sorry?
Sorry. And anyway, Chris Shipper had donated bulbs to the land trust, and so they did come and plant 200 tulips in the courtyard, in the sophomore courtyard.
Yes.
But as you know, because you probably get their mailers as well, they have a lot of triangles that they cover throughout the town. And the garden club, is that the one that does the town hall? Yeah.
I think Beautification also does the town hall, right. There are a couple others. That's just, I heard the beautification, I didn't know if other people were interested in taking particular parts of the campus and dividing it up and sharing the...
I think they probably have a lot.
Basically said, "You're good."
Yeah. I think they have a lot on their plate, and I think they think that we have enough manpower here on our own.
That's true.
So I think they're happy to give us guidance, but they were not, they were not chomping at the bit to come help us weed.
Well, it sounds like you've asked all the questions, and if, and as far as the students are concerned also, that's something, I don't know if it fits in with any botany or any sort of sciences or programs too, that would make it...
Or maybe a garden club or something like that.
But it's something like that. It is a learning experience for everyone. So thank you very much for all your work. This is a generous offer of your time and of the various ways that you're raising money. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sangita?
Tell everybody else, this is again a fabulous project. I'm so excited to see what it will look like and just, you know, at the end of next year. But along with what Hazel was saying, other groups, have you also maybe looked at the nature center? Because I know sometimes they involve the high school kids to do things there, grow things, that maybe they could even create a summer project, you know, where kids might want to do something here and be kind of related. Just another thought.
That's a great idea.
That's a good idea. Now we've got a long to do, Liz.
Sorry, I have more work. Appreciate all that you've done so far. Just fabulous.
Maria?
I think it is a really great idea. I love the flags. They look great. I had a question about along the athletic center, the tall plants, will they be in concrete planters?
Oh, there's an open bed already.
Oh, is there? Okay.
Yeah. Right against that big wall, there's a, like, it's eight feet, yeah, it's big. And it, all it has is very small boxwoods in it. So we literally just be filling the space that was already left there for plants that has never been filled. We would add one additional planter under basically Jay Egan's office. There's, it's just, there's weeds going through the bricks. We want to remove some of the pavers and add a new planter there, similar to what we have just added up front. So that would be a new installation, but the rest of it would just be filling spaces that are empty.
I was just, that would be great. I was thinking not to add to your to-do list, but getting alumni classes, you know, class of 19, whatever, to sponsor planters.
We would, we would love that. We would love that. And we have started talks with the boosters, because they would love to have access to the alumni as well. So Brian and I had a conversation about how we could kick that off, how we could have a page where alumni could register, maybe there'd be some information. But right now, we don't, we don't have any alumni information. Our kids leave and we wave goodbye.
Okay, Jen?
Okay. So I have nothing for your to-do list, but I have to tell you, I've been here a long time, and this kind of stuff usually gets, you know, kind of thrown by the wayside all the time. So we're so lucky that you guys, you know, spearheaded this, because it really does make a difference. It makes it like a happy place, and it's fun, it looks great. I mean, the second the banners are up, all my kids are talking about it. So thank you, and I know how talented you are, so we're so excited to see how this all transforms, and thank you for your dedication to this school, because it makes a difference. So thank you.
Anyone else? Hazel?
Sometimes in the past, and this goes back, there have been funds that have been left in various class funds, and I think sometimes they think, "We'll use that for a party in the future," or they might not have gotten organized. That may have been in the past and no longer is there, but it might be one place to also look. I would, I would imagine, the only trouble is how to reach those people who were responsible for it. I don't know how you do that, just was what you're saying, except people may remember some of the classes and the more recent graduates, who the officers were and something like that. I don't know. I'm sure it's, we're not talking about the large sums you're mentioning, they're smaller sums that were left. Just a suggestion.
Well, we'll see if we can find any money.
Under every rock.
And these are great ideas that will be on our to-do lists for next...
Write 'em down. It's...
Yeah. Since, since we all have, you know, such creative juices right now, why don't I suggest that if you have additional suggestions, that maybe you email Jennifer or...
Our email is pfa@ncps.com. Our email is pfa@ncps-k12.org. And visit our website, because we really, we've got the plant list, we've got our presentation, we've got a lot of information there if you want more information. Obviously, we just touched the broad strokes tonight.
But I do think the alumni connection is a great one, and I think there's a lot of untapped potential, and I think we all know that classes come back, you know, every five years, there's, well, every year, there's a new class coming back for their 50th, their 25th, or whatever, and that they do want to give to the school. I actually had a guy contact me this summer about it. I mentioned it to Brian, and he's coming back next year for his 50th, and he was giving, he was throwing all these ideas out. So, you know, I think if we put our collective heads together and figure out how we could harness all that and figure out a database or something, I think that there really is some untapped potential. Because I think people have a lot of pride about New Canaan.
Yeah.
They don't go back to their kindergarten, but they do go back to their high school. So, something to think about.
Well, I remember a couple, a few years ago, I think the Beautification League or the Garden Center, you know, at the Fall Fair, they, you know, were selling bulbs to, to members of the community to help raise funds for their, you know, beautification projects in the town. So I'm sure there's lots of different opportunities in, to, to raise funds even outside of, of the general school population, so, all right.
Could I just ask you to share your website? The address? And you can also get through it...
Or you can go through the high school, go through the high school and it's PFA.
You can also get through the, the high school website, which is at...
Yeah, and then it's PFA.
NCPS-desk-k12.org, and you can go to the high school, and there's a PFA link there as well. But I would encourage people to go to the website. I think that one of the wonderful things about the whole project is the education that I've been receiving about all of the plantings and how it all works and all comes together. But I will say, downside is you'll never look at the building the same way, because they pointed out things going on in the building that I hadn't noticed before. And that's, it's really good work to be doing. It's really a wonderful effort. But if you want, are you going to show us the website? Is that what you...
Well, I was having trouble getting to it, but...
Okay. So if you go to the high school website, which is NCPS, N-C-P-S-k12.org, then you can go to the high school from there and click on it.
So if someone wanted to volunteer, they could use this or donate.
Harry?
Yes. There it is.
Yeah?
It's really a very well-designed website.
And then on the, there's a second page that has more information. This has the phases and... For some reason, I can't scroll.
There you go.
Oh, great. There are documents. The plant list hasn't been added yet, so I, I wasn't right there, but it, I'm sure it'll be added tonight. So there we go. That's our website.
Thank you very much. It was, oh, sorry, Penny, you had, sorry.
Just a little bit of history and another thanks to another group, which is that the High School Building Committee did save that little garden in the front, and we had no funds for planting it. So it was really a mess, and as you saw. But I would say that the group that Peggy Danneman was involved with, I forget...
Yeah, she, she came and met with us.
She, she, I just wanted to give a thanks to that group, because she has saved that garden over the last 10 years and kind of kept it going a little bit, all alone and did a lot of work, all volunteer effort. And I think that this is a huge step forward, but I did want to recognize the efforts of that group and the thanks that, you know, past generations of high school students have to her and, and that organization for, I think the New Canaan Gardens, I forget which garden group it is.
She's the beautification, like, her daughter graduated in 2013, and I don't think it had been touched since then, so...
Right, and she, she...
But she was, she was a regular maintenance of it.
Right, I just wanted to recognize that, thank you to them as well.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate all your efforts on that.
It's very exciting.
Okay, moving on to X to One update with Mr. Salvastrelli.
And Matt tonight will be joined by Mr. Egan as well, and Mr. Honahan, who is a technology integrator for us at the high school. You might know Tom by name, if not by face, because he is our go-to guy in many, many ways around technology and the website and Google Apps and Google Classroom. As a matter of fact, I was just calling on Tom today to help out in a couple of ways. And as they are probably switching over from one machine to another or going to use that?
Sure. This is really just an update this evening. So as you know, we began Bring Your Own Device for freshmen in January. It was the end of January, so it's really only been in place for two months, but we thought it was important to come back to the Board of Ed and give you an update. We have brought the X to One Committee together, and we've done some gathering of data from our students, from our parents, and certainly from our faculty. So we'd like to share that information with you as we're looking to move forward and looking for ways to improve our process in the future as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Salvastrelli and Mr. Egan and Mr. Honahan. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Going to keep the positive vibes flowing today with a nice update on BYOD. But as Dr. Quarantia just shared with you, we are here to give you an update on how the ninth grade BYOD is going. In addition to the update, we'll be sharing with you some of our recommendations for next steps in this initiative and moving forward. As Jill had mentioned, as we review the information together, I think it's, it's useful to keep in mind that the initiative was rolled out under three months ago, okay? That said, we have some very useful and encouraging information to share with you. Just like we had in our initial presentation in the fall, I'll be sharing you, with you some information that we gathered from parents, teachers, and students. And I think Bill stole a little bit of my thunder. I wanted to thank Tom Honahan. There are lots of people that have been very helpful in the rollout of the BYOD initiative for ninth graders. Tom is half of our tech integrator team that's here tonight, Ms. Hannah Magnin is the other half. They've been really instrumental in supporting the teachers in their implementation of technology, addressing student needs, providing professional learning, and also gathering a lot of the feedback, which I have to share with you this evening. So a nod to Tom and his counterpart Hannah, who couldn't be here this evening. Hold on a second here. So I'd like to start off with a brief review of some of the activities that we've been engaged in in the fall. As you'll, as you'll see, I think you're going to have to look over here, our efforts really focused on two main categories: communication to parents, staff, and students, and also ongoing professional learning that we're providing to teachers. Okay? As I said, Bill is going to be, is presenting here with me, and I'm going to pass the, after he takes a drink of water and rehydrates, I'm going to pass it over to him so he can share with you some information on the parent feedback, okay?
Sorry, I just dropped in from outside, battling a cold, and it's been a long couple of days. Certainly, we wanted to solicit feedback from parents, and we sent out a brief survey to get a quick snapshot of, of what we could get back from them. The questions were designed around concerns raised by parents in the fall, and it was just one method of gathering input. We did have some pre-rollout feedback that we had received from them. There were three families that expressed reservations about using a device. We met with each of those families individually to try and best address each of their individual needs and how we could, could work out using the BYOD format to best meet their needs. Ongoing concerns, we received a couple emails in the past two months with specific, specific concerns. One regarding a broken screen, and there was an incident in a class where the air server had shared some information, but we've, we've been able to correct that problem shortly. It was addressed right after that. The survey, we sent the survey to gather some reliable feedback. There were short questions that focused on points that parents expressed to us in the fall. We recognized it was only one point, one type of feedback. About 25% of the parents in the freshman class responded to the survey, which is not atypical from other surveys that we send out. The questions. "I purchased a device for my child specifically for BYOD." 53% of the class already had a device. I think that was pretty important information to know, that they were ready, in many cases already brought them to school. 46.8% did not, and they did purchase for the purposes of using our program. The feedback again reflects a little over, half our student population had a device and we hoped were using it, and we wanted to make sure we were conscious of that point, that already half the class had a device and was hopefully prepared to bring them in. Responsible use. "My child uses their device in a responsible manner." This is one of the questions that parents had in, in the beginning of the year, would the child use the device responsibly? 72.7% of parents responded their child is using the device responsibly in school. Again, this was a concern from the fall, and we wanted to make sure that was addressed. Time management. "Having a device has helped my child use her time more efficiently as a learner." Here, we want to see if parents notice the positive impact on students having devices on time management. Later, you'll see some feedback from students regarding this area, but certainly the results here for parents are not that clear. You know, 41.6% were undecided, and they weren't sure whether this was helping or not. "My child reports that they use the device in school." And this question, 16% of parents say their child uses the device always. 38% of parents say their child uses the device very often. 33% of parents say their child uses devices sometimes. Together, that's 85% of our kids reporting that the child is using the device in school. We consider that to be positive feedback for the start of the, the program. And keep in mind, not all classes have students bringing the devices, because they're mixed grades. So you might have, you know, a grade nine, 10 class in, in one classroom at the same time, so they may not be using the device, so that could also skew some of the reporting on that. "My child feels that having a device enhances the learning experience." Again, we, we find this to be pretty positive. Students are saying that, that, again, telling their parents that having a device in hand has helped them. As you can see, 60% say that it's helped them within school. Additional feedback from parents. Some have said, we've heard from a few parents, that weight of the device is a problem, that they have to carry a device on top of all their books in school. Screen time has been a concern we've heard from some parents, and certainly something we, we consider as well, and we let the teachers drive the use of how the, how often they use devices in the classroom. And we have had one report of a broken screen. And we want to solicit, solicit additional feedback from parents through a ninth grade parent forum on May 17th at 9:00 AM, where it will help drive our program further, you know, what ways can, can parents really help us make the program better moving forward? So, that's the parent portion. At this point, I'll turn it back to Matt, who can carry us the rest of the way.
Thank you, Bill. So as I said before, in addition to the parent feedback, we solicited some feedback from staff. We used a variety of methods to, to gather this information, everything from informal conversations with teachers in the lunchroom, surveys, we sent out a department survey asking for feedback on the BYOD initiative. We did one-on-one teacher interviews. We had conversations throughout the rollout, department chair meetings, and we also convened a, a BYOD committee in March fif, on March 15th with a, a wide representation of high school constituents to make sure that we gathered their input on how things were going. Here are some of the, here's the feedback that we, or some questions that we asked teachers to help focus the feedback that they wanted to share. So one of the questions we asked was, "How has each student having a device impacted their learning?" And we started with this slide because in preparing this presentation and having conversations with the tech integrators and other members of our team, we really felt that this feedback was very important. Certainly, you can read the quotes that are there, but the consistent theme that came through was noticing that the student's ability to choose the tool that best meets their needs has had a significant impact on how they approach the learning process. We felt like this is a reflection of opportunity to, for teachers to personalize learning more, you know, that idea that not one size fits all, and that the, the technology that the students have in hand allow teachers to, to really look at ways that they can offer learning to students in a different way, through making, helping, offering thoughtful choices to the students in their designing of their instruction. Now, the question we asked, "How has each student having a device impacted their, their learning?" Again, here's a quote for you to take a look at. Another theme that they, the teachers that came through in these questions was the opportunity to help students collaborate more readily and more meaningfully. I can share with you that I've seen students collaborate and share information dynamically in real time with students that are not in their classroom, of course, within their classroom, not in their classroom, and actually at different schools. We, I observed a lesson where there were students in a science class that were working collaboratively with students from Weston High School on a seed project in real time. And that's really was fantastic to see, very powerful learning. And that's that opportunity that technology provides to collaborate in the learning process. Another question we asked teachers is, "How has this pilot impacted your teaching? How has your planning changed?" Notable about these responses to the question was the teacher's willingness and his desire to look at their instructional practice and consider how they might want to take a more flexible approach to delivering instruction. And designing and delivering instruction in a way which allows students greater flexibility, greater ownership, and there are some bullets up there that sort of summarize some key pieces of feedback, whether that's using a variety of online applications or resources, adapting lessons to meet student needs, and also a greater, reflecting a greater disposition of teachers to offer more open-ended learning experiences for students. Further question was, "What challenges have you encountered so far? Were you able to solve them and how?" I'll give you a chance to take a look at those quotes. But with this new openness came a recognition that shifts in instructional practice need to occur. I think that's been a theme in some of the slides I provided before. This is great feedback. This is feedback which we want to hear. This is something which we have been working on through professional learning experiences with our teachers, provided and offered to them in a wide variety of, of platforms, whether that's large group, small group, or even one-on-one. But that feedback that teachers are recognizing that they want to change their instructional approach. In addition, teachers offered some relevant feedback regarding the hardware and the infrastructure. A recognition that as we use devices for a wider range of tasks, they began to see its different strengths and of these, of these resources that they want to take into consideration as they plan their instruction. There was a piece on feedback regarding challenges that students had printing wirelessly from their devices. Now, I think this is, this was very helpful, but I also want to make sure clear, it wasn't an infrastructure issue. It was more an understanding. Each device in order to, different types of devices, whether that's a Mac, PC, Chromebook, each have specific protocols which you have to follow in order to get set up to print wirelessly. It was those, we provided students with resources online, but I think we needed to work on making sure that students understood where to go to access the information. Sometimes it's offering it once or twice is not enough, but maybe more times, to make sure that students understand where to go, to make sure that they can get the information to set up their devices to print wirelessly. Important clarification, it wasn't the fact that we didn't have the infrastructure, it was to make sure that we communicate to students how you go about addressing it for yourself. In addition, we asked teachers, "What additional resources would you feel are necessary for large, for a broader rollout of BYOD?" First and foremost was the desire for more professional learning. I can tell you through my conversations, I'm fortunate enough to have my office downstairs in, in the Library Media Center, so I see Tom and Hannah and their work, and they are very often meeting and collaborating with teachers to look at the, the lesson plans that they have, have conversations with teachers, how they can utilize technology to integrate learning, happens throughout the course of the day. Really very powerful work. And there's a desire, teachers are coming to, to the TIs for that support. Another thing which was really notable was that departments are setting aside time in their monthly meetings to talk about what is best practice in utilizing technology when designing instruction, okay? And that's the, that's a great conversation to be having. We continue to work with DTFs, desks, to bolster the infrastructure in non-instructural spaces for Wi-Fi. Last year, when we looked for this rollout for ninth grade, the focus was on making sure we had strong and reliable Wi-Fi connection on instructional spaces. I'll talk a little bit more about this later. Our next stage, step is going to be looking at... Our next step is going to be looking at some key non-instructural spaces, places where students hang out when they're not in class, where they may want to be doing work, and what we can do to provide them that access. All right? Also, some feedback that we had received from teachers was making sure that we have a proactive approach to help support students who may not be able to afford devices. Had one or two examples this fall, or this winter where a teacher came, a student which we did, we thought had a device, a teacher noticed that they needed some support. I worked directly with Ari Rothman, who is the ninth-grade supervisor, school counselor, and the classroom teachers to make sure we got that student a device. I thought that was a really great example of the teacher being tuned into the needs of the students. And it wasn't that they didn't have a device, it's that the device that they brought in really didn't meet the specifications that we needed, and we wanted to make sure that they had a resource, okay? And we'll continue to have conversations with school counselors to make sure that they are on the lookout for those types of situations. So thinking ahead, what are the next steps with our staff? You may recall, on the right-hand side, this is a graphic of the SAMR model. It's a representation of how you implement technology within the learning environment. One of the things that we're going to continue to do is to review and revise our digital citizenship lessons at the middle and the high school, so we can ensure that students are prepared to use technology in a safe and responsible manner. We'll continue to offer differentiated professional learning to support teachers moving towards, moving up that SAMR scale towards a more transformational use of technology within the classroom. We continue to focus on identifying high-value resources and applications that teachers can use in the learning environment, and we're going to reinforce creative ways to manage student devices within the classroom. Lastly, we ask students to tell us their thoughts, share their thoughts. We interviewed ninth-grade students in a variety of settings, individually, in small group, and whole class. Students were asked a set of questions, and here are some of the highlights of their To the question, how often and in what capacity do you use your device during the day? All students, all subjects were represented in this question, and the majority of students reported using their devices every day, at least in one class. You can see at the bottom there a list of some sample activities which students were engaged in when using the device. We asked students, how has having a device impacted your learning? You'll see the student quote there. And allow me to summarize the bullet points up there with sort of three themes that came through. Students emphasized that this technology provides them a convenience for learning, helps them organize the information that they need throughout the course of the day and for their work at home, and helps them feel more productive. Question we asked them was, does having a device change how you interact with your teachers and peers? The reason that we asked students this question is because there was a concern from parents when we had a conversation in the fall, that once you put a screen in front of them, they'll be paying more attention to the screen than a person next to them or the teacher in the front of the room. And I wanted to make sure we circled back to that question and asked students their thoughts and be able to make sure that we have a continuum of that conversation. The majority of students reported little or no differences in teacher or peer interactions since the BYOD rollout. However, students' comments are focused on the following areas. I thought it was really very insightful that students said, having the technology in hand allows me to reach out to my teacher and email them if I need assistance, if I need clarification on a task, when it's not necessarily convenient for me to stop by after class to ask a question, or perhaps I'm not a child who's less inclined to approach a teacher. The technology offers that opportunity to continue to have a connection with their teacher about learning. Students also suggested some strategies of how we can manage the devices during, within the learning environment during instruction. I thought, again, we thought that this was really very useful. What was notable was the student recognition and their willingness to share this understanding that these devices are both a powerful tool and a potential distraction, okay? And we all know that. I mean, how many of us are tempted to check our phone when it buzzes? I would imagine even right now, we're tempted to check our devices that we might have in hand or whatever it may be. This is a real challenge, whether that's for high school students or whether that's for adults. Our students are giving us feedback. How great is it that ninth graders are sharing with us that they recognize that this is a potential distraction? What we need to be able to do is help them with the tools, provide them the tools to understand how to turn it off, how to prioritize your tasks, how to manage technology so it works for them, not so they're not following it all of the time. So we'll do that through our digital citizenship lessons and also through collaborating with classroom teachers, so they can make sure that they are managing the classroom in a way where that's a piece of their planning process. Continuing, we asked, what challenges have you encountered so far and will you be able to solve them? All right? This echoes a little bit of a theme I touched on with the classroom teachers. Students talked about the infrastructure. Now, infrastructure sort of overgeneralizes that feedback, but students are looking for opportunities to do their work when they have non-structured time. Library, not a concern, well-covered, but we have students that stay after school for sports, we have students that may stay after school for theater, for example. We were getting feedback that the coverage in those non-instructural spaces are not as strong, mainly because we prioritize the learning environment first. So this is something which we have a plan for moving forward. I believe Bill talked a little bit about the weight of the device. Students report, looking, reported looking forward, eagerly forward to having eBooks rather than textbooks. That said, a little bit of the feedback was also, I like having an eBook, but when it comes down to studying, I like to have the text in hand. So I think there's a challenge there. And we'll continue to look into that eBook as a resource for students. I think it's important to keep in mind that the publishers, textbook publishers are not eager to get into that space, and also moving into that space is costly. There's a cost which is associated with that. But we are looking into that, we are having some conversations about that, and we will continue to do so. Lastly, it's great to get feedback from students where they're looking for, looking, encouraging teachers to use what we call learning management software, like Moodle or Google Classroom, to facilitate the learning process. These platforms allow students to engage in a lot of learning outside of the classroom and bring their thoughts and their work to the classroom and to collaborate with students in real time. It's a repository for information. It's an area where the classroom teacher can keep track of the work that they're doing. And the feedback that students have been giving us is, we really like these platforms. So what we're going to be doing is looking into other options moving forward, along with what we are already using right now. So we asked students for next steps, and we have two basic categories of feedback. Regarding infrastructure, we'll continue to widen our coverage in the areas other than classrooms. I talked to Scott Barnett, he has eighteen Wi-Fi drop points which are on order, and they will be installed in a priority fashion in those non-instructural spaces to see if we can broaden coverage for students. Students are looking for more plugs. So they're coming in with their devices charged, but when you use them for six hours a day, and for using for some pretty heavy lifting when it comes to learning, you need to be able to charge them. So our plan is to create, is to put outlets, not outlets, I'm sorry, power strips in the back of classrooms so the students can be plugging in, okay? And also providing students additional resources and strategies to troubleshoot minor technical issues. So in this area, we're thinking about the development of a digital repository for students so that we can post it online, and if a student has a question about how to print wirelessly, they can go and look at the video along with the print resources. And that's another way where we can provide information for students and help them troubleshoot independently. We have talked, thinking about possibly adding some additional connections, meetings in the fall, so that we can have students bring their devices and have conversations, say, what are your questions about, you have about your device as we start the school year? Let us troubleshoot with you. And also directing them to the link on the website of the high school, so they know where to go when we're not with them or where they're not with somebody, where they start to solve their own problems about their devices. Of course, we're still going to want to make sure that we have technical resources, whether that's tech experts or our DTS crew or even our tech integrators available for students when they have those issues which are not minor issues but we need to address, okay? In the area of learning, we're, the recommendations here was to have students, have more teachers use student devices during the school day, okay? Great to hear. Have more teachers to commit to using the learning management system like Google Classroom or Moodle, and I touched upon that a little bit earlier. And continue to have students, allow students to handwrite notes and use hard copy resources where appropriate or where students feel that that's best fits their needs. And again, I'm thinking back to conversations that we had with parents in the fall. Parents were asking, just if they have this device, are you now going to require students to take notes on the device all the time? It goes back to that first, one of those first slides, it's about choice that we're providing. If, for a student, if they, if taking notes longhand works, great. If you're a student that likes to take notes on your laptop and that helps you keep organized, great. It's about providing them with that flexibility, okay? So lastly, we thought we'd wrap up with sharing a brief video, which we put together.
One of the best things about BYOD is with my freshmen, if I want them to read a really current news article that just came out of like the New York Times today, I can link it on Moodle and they can actually edit it, highlight, and we can have the conversation. I don't have to worry about, do I have time to photocopy? Whereas right now, I'm standing here with an article for my AP class that I just had to photocopy because they don't have computers yet.
I like it because, for one, it saves time, the kids don't have to spend a lot of time logging on to the cows, which was always, it took time to transition. The other thing I really like is that now at the end of a lesson, I can more easily assess what went right, what went wrong, and adjust for the next day, or sometimes even in the middle. I can change a document even for different levels of kids and push those documents out the next day. I don't have to go through the process of making the copies and worrying about making a mistake. And if I can push things out to the kids much more quickly, I can adjust the pace of the lesson depending on where they are. And you just never know from year to year where they're going to be on a given day.
Okay, it is amazing because I can totally change the way I approach a class. So because I'm in and out of different classes, so today I'm working with juniors and with freshmen. And I have to go and figure out, I had to schedule cows and get it all working to get the near pod to work with the juniors, whereas the freshman yesterday, I went in and said, okay, just go to this website, open this form, do your brainstorming activity, and then we're going to analyze the data. I couldn't have built that lesson a year, like even six months ago, with a whole grade. And now we can. It's magic.
A lot easier to get your homework done during school, like online homework.
Where do you do your homework during your degree?
The library.
Library?
Or like, you can go, you can do it in the cafeteria now because of BYOD.
Oh, sweet.
You don't need to use the library computers. Less work sheets to carry around, I like less folders and binders. You can get a lighter load to carry around in school, and it's easier to keep track of everything.
Online textbooks would make my life so much easier because I have to keep carrying my backpack, like home and school and smart board on my backpacks.
It's very organized.
Yeah, it's much easier to use because you can just access it, like it's right there instead of like digging through your backpack for papers.
Taking notes, I think it's like a lot easier to take notes online in classes, and I just like that format better. It's easier than writing. Yeah, there's more tools you can use.
It's awesome how I can look up stuff on my iPad while doing work on the computer. It's much more efficient.
It takes forever to log into the laptops on the carts. So just to have your own thing that you can log into really quickly is really awful.
The carts, I think it's a lot quicker to have your own computer with you because if there's the cart, there's always the line and you have to plug it in, and there's all this kind of complicated mess that goes along with it. But if you have your own computer, you just basically pull it out of your backpack and have your own login.
With BYOD, my teachers are more willing to do creative projects because they know that the kids will put in the effort with the technology at their disposal. My science teacher recently allowed us to do a project that showed how pressure works, and we could either make a movie or we could present in front of the class. And more people chose to make the movie because it was a more interactive and creative option.
Coming in is kind of hard sometimes. It's always like easy to do it, sometimes you have things to do. So sending an email, you have like your computer in front of you and you can just do it.
It makes my life easier. It helps me access the board.
Helps me learn in my own way.
At my own pace.
It makes my education more meaningful.
Definitely roll it out to every other grade.
Yes, that was our very own Spencer Reeves over there with the cameo appearance. Autographs afterwards, if you like. So you saw the student recommendation at the end of the video, but based on the parent feedback that we've gathered, the initial feedback has been very positive, and we will continue to gather information from parents moving forward. The BYOD feedback from our March meeting that had broad representation from staff was also similarly positive, encouraging a broader implementation moving forward. And student feedback overwhelmingly supported a broader-based use of BYOD next year. The recommendation that we have is to broaden this opportunity for all students and the scope of the initiative so that all NCHS students can benefit from the opportunity next year. Thank you very much, and we're ready to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Selfstry. I want to start by thanking you for all your efforts this, you know, year. It's been a big year for the district and, you know, you being new to the district this year yourself, you've got a lot, you had a lot on your plate. And I saw you at the beginning of the year, rolling this out to the freshman parents, and I was really impressed with, you know, it was an uncertain time for people, and you answered everyone's questions and made them feel comfortable and, you know, not everybody was perfectly comfortable, but I think you did a great job getting the parents and the kids, you know, on board and willing to try something new. Change isn't always easy, and I think you did an outstanding job. And I also wanted to say, I, I'm, you know, the, you know, this one-to-one initiative is not, you know, a new, you know, it's not out there in the education world. Everything I'm reading now is saying, you know, we're kind of just going at, we might even be a little bit behind the curve in where we are in technology and its implementation in, within our district. And so I appreciate all your efforts to kind of get us in line, because, I mean, there's some pretty exciting things out there that we could be doing once we get the professional learning in place with our teachers. I think it could be a very exciting time in education for us. So anyway, I wanted to open up to everybody for any questions or comments you have for the Hazel.
I just want to thank you also for bringing this out, but also watching. We were fortunate enough to visit the high school and see how the students were using the one-on-one in a variety of ways, and the other ways that the computers are being used at every grade level. And it was exciting to see that happening, and I think because of seeing the children that are particularly in the elementary grades... And I think because of seeing the children that are particularly in the elementary grades that are using computers so seemingly easily, and then going to the middle school and seeing the same thing, that's got to be building year upon year, making it so that it's easier for them to come into the high school and be doing it on a much longer, fuller day and a bigger schedule. So thank you for all the organization that's gone into that also.
Thank you very much.
I think this is a great presentation. I love the approach with the 360 stakeholder feedback, looking at what the parents thought, what these teachers thought, and what the students thought. I do think this is the biggest change for the parents. I think, I actually am a parent of a high school freshman, and I, in preparation for this presentation tonight, kind of took him aside and asked him his thoughts on BYOD. And he kind of was like, you know, this is how, this is school. This is, of course, it's an efficient tool. He gave me some very compelling examples of how the technology is, is integrated into the classroom. He talked about in honors English how he can now work on an essay, and the teacher real-time can be providing input and feedback on the essay, and it's real-time collaboration and efficient. And so from his standpoint, this was just, you know, this is a 21st century education. So, but I appreciate that you looked at the feedback from all the different angles. And I do think that the, you know, rolling the BYOD out to the whole high school is critical for us to stay in front of our 21st century education. Just, I guess, a comment and then a question is, and it's not directly related with BYOD, but the digital citizenship curriculum. I do think that we need to continually be relooking that because I think technology is moving so quickly that, you know, what I think we may have first put in place as, you know, kind of the fundamentals of digital citizenship for fifth and sixth graders, you know, I think they're now moving beyond that. So I think we always have to be relooking that curriculum and making sure that as, you know, new trends are emerging, whether they be the new messenger apps, or whatever it may be, that we're on top of that and educating our kids on that. And then my question is, you talked about how the students gave some feedback on managing the devices during instruction. I'm just wondering if currently there are consistent protocols in place for the teachers to handle that, or is that something we're working on? Or do we envision consistent protocols, or how we're approaching that?
We offer, we've offered teachers some strategies. I think that, again, as we talk about with students, not one size fits all. I think there are some teachers which are very comfortable with managing and have their own strategy, either by experience or by preference, on how to manage student engagement. One of the things that we have offered teachers is, it's quite simple, actually. It's sort of a red light, green light, yellow light. And if students walk in and, it's, it's pretty fundamental, but it's, if you need that, if it helps you manage your classroom, green light means devices out and ready to be used because we're going to be utilizing them for the majority of the learning today. Yellow light is keep them on your desk, but closed because we're going to be using them for a portion of the classroom, but not quite yet. And then red light is you can put it away because we're going to be doing something else in the classroom. So again, that was something, an idea which was generated and shared out with teachers for those individuals that felt like that would be a helpful resource. Again, I think that it's important to share out that not every teacher needs that, but the teacher that does, that's a good, that's a useful tool. Okay? And if students see it enough where if they walk in and they've got it there, they see it on the board, they know what that means.
And then just one other quick question is, I'm wondering, as we lay out our BYOD strategy, if not only are we looking kind of at our peer schools, but also looking ahead to the colleges? Because I recall from one of the most recent alumni coffees where we bring the college freshmen back and talk about how well New Canaan High School prepared them. Many of them described in a college environment where, you know, all of their note-taking must be online, and that the, you know, the professor or TA actually checks it before they leave class that day. And, you know, it's, you know, so what they were describing was certainly a world where, you know, the device is integral to their college education. So I'm just wondering how much we're looking forward so that we can then, you know, build those skills into the high school process.
I would say that's something we can, we should and can look at. Okay? The only other thing is that the learning management software that we talk about is also software which is where, which is typically used at college level. Okay? And that's something which I said before, we really need to dig into a little bit deeper. We have some tools, we want to look at, what's the most effective tools in that area?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to follow along with Sherri because now that I do have two kids that have just started in college this year, and, and it's true, I mean, everybody has a laptop, all the work is done on that. And I think it's so important that our district is looking to do this program because we want to have our students prepared. So even though for us as parents in our generation, we're not native digital people, it's difficult and change is hard. But I think the way our district is approaching it by doing a systematic, you know, pilot study to see, work out the bugs and kind of roll it out, but it's something that has to get rolled out because this is what the kids are doing in college. And they need to be able to work with their technology, understand one has glitches because they may not have that same kind of support system that they can get at this level, at the college level. I mean, they have support, but it's not as nurturing. And so I'm kind of glad to see that. And it's going to be interesting, you know, for us, you know, the kids today that are high, or freshmen, I notice because I have a younger child, and even the way he looks at technology and uses it as a tool, and what we talked about, the tech tour that I think Hazel was mentioning, that they're having, you know, kindergartners, you know, third graders, whatever, using different ways where the kids today didn't use it that way, you know, it was a novelty. And so even for them, they're still not quite the same natives as the kindergartners are today, or, you know, like I see in my fifth grade. And they may look at it differently. They may really look at it more as a tool, not such a novelty to go do things. But who knows, it might be an age thing too. It'll come and see. But I had a question for you too on this, in that, you know, for, you're saying that, you know, we've got a good Wi-Fi all around except those places. What are your plans and how quickly, or, you know, what is the timeframe that you're looking to get more support systems in the other areas? Because like I said, kids, we want to give them the best opportunities to, you know, be able to work on their activities.
I think the, the first step would be to take the additional, 18 additional drops, which offers pretty substantial coverage. In an ideal setting, one drop would cover about two classrooms worth of space. However, we have to take into consideration which, you know, cinder block classrooms, et cetera. But, and then we're going to prioritize where we place those based on feedback we got from teachers and students. I talked about the theater area, I talked about, you know, the gym, those type of areas. And then we, we should, we take it from there and also make sure we have additional feedback from students as we move forward. I think that's a good way to start for the fall. And then just continuing to have conversations as we, as we broaden this to make sure we get feedback from students.
Then I'm not sure if you addressed this question in your survey, but I always kind of wonder too about, you know, because they get to choose their device. But of course, I've noticed myself that when you look and do things on my computer, and the way I handle websites is very different than on my mobile device, you know, where you have to use an app, it's kind of modified, not all websites react the same way when you do it on an iPhone versus on your iPad versus your computer.
Sure.
So I'm wondering if the students are getting the same, you know, level of information because, you know, it's not working as well like if someone had their Chromebook versus someone, you know, trying to do the work with that, with just a little smartphone, and whether they're realizing that, because you don't want to have it be, you know, somebody has a better advantage than the other because their device is not as good as somebody else's device. I don't know if you've encountered that, or if there's issues.
I think that when we're talking about, I want to make sure I understand, but basically, you know, students might be utilizing their phone for a reference, but when they're doing the work, they're doing it on the laptop.
Okay.
I have seen, you have seen some students that have the laptop up and the iPhone there. But typically, if they're doing, if they're really doing work, they're doing it on the laptop.
Well, and just too, Joe, that's why we had set a minimum specification for the devices that students would bring in, and phones were not on the list. There was a screen size piece to that as well.
Right.
And I think it's all still available on that website as well, the BYOD website that the high school put together. But it does give out the specifications, the minimum specifications of the devices, with plenty of variety, Chromebooks, iPads, others, but the minimum specs so that there would be a commonality of experience, and they would not experience what you're talking about.
Yeah, I think we talked about the screen being 13 inches, that was a minimum kind of thing.
And then I just have one last comment to, you know, the, and Tiana, you're just mentioning about, you know, this, we're not being at the forefront of introducing this. I got a chance to speak with a gentleman who used to teach high school, then left to do a career in law, and now has come back and returned to teaching high school, and teaches AP government. And, you know, I was just asking him, you know, how the difference is, you know, from when he taught before, and, you know, now he says that, yeah, everybody has a device, and, you know, he's teaching high school. So in their high school, it's out in California because that's where I was, but, but, you know, that's what everyone uses. And, you know, he's just noticed that, you know, a lot less paper, you know, he's got a couple of things that he posts and he gives out, and it's very, you know, efficient with his timing. And so again, this is something where everybody is today, so I'm glad that we're going towards it too.
Is there a standard learning management system that you're anticipating rolling out? Are you able to sort of force teachers in one direction or another, or is that something that's coming down the road? You're not quite there yet.
We're not there yet. We have had, we use Google Classroom and Moodle. Moodle is something we sort of grew from the ground up here at the high school. There were a few teachers that started using it and had great success with it, and by word of mouth, it started to spread, and it's quite successful. We also have teacher, students coming in from the middle school who have experience with Google Classroom, and that's also a platform which we use. But we really do want to spend some time, and we'll be spending some time over the summer, looking into what are the options for learning management systems moving forward. That's not a conversation, we haven't dug too deeply into that yet. It's something which we want to do to make some smart choices moving forward.
Okay, so does that mean that in, in the future, you'll pick one system and every teacher will be on that system, or is it?
It's possible that we have a conversation that's based on what we learn over the summer and doing our research, that we're going to make a recommendation moving forward where this is a platform which we feel is going to meet the needs of our students in moving forward.
Okay.
Currently, okay. It's also an opportunity to research what other districts are using. Brian and I had an opportunity to go to Greenwich where they've rolled out K-12. They're using Schoolology, and they've trained all the teachers and the students on how to utilize it. And it's just used at different levels and different aspects of that program is used based on the developmental needs of the student and the ages of the student. So I think it's something that we really do have to spend some time researching and certainly finding out what other districts are utilizing, you know, being very thoughtful about it, and then deciding what's going to be the best for us to utilize. Sorry, Brian.
Thanks.
Maria?
I just want to say, I appreciate the survey. I think that was great. And I, you know, I'm one of the people, one of the parents that was involved early on. But I was actually involved when we rolled out Moodle in the high school. And I've been very happy with the technology that my older daughter, who's a sophomore in college, received when she was here and had access to. So I was wondering, one question, if you expand this, how is that different than what? It seems to me the high school students have the flexibility to use the technology, you know, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And I have other questions, but if you, if you want to just answer that, I was just wondering, how will it be different if you do expand it up to the other grades?
Well, I think it's about, I think the feedback that we gathered from the, from both the teachers and the students is that the platform, the learning management system is very useful. Okay? At this point, it's been by teacher choice, but we probably need to look at, how do we publicize that and broaden the teacher, all teachers' understandings of the value of that platform for the learning process? Okay? It's sort of been a grassroots conversation that's happened up to this point, especially in the area of Moodle, and where it's very successful, I would say. And, but we want to look at, if this is working well, how are we broadening our understanding, the teacher's understanding of the value of this, of this resource for teaching and learning?
I think also, just part of your question, I think, Maria, was about the BYOD program itself, right? And what it would be, what the difference would be expanding that in grades 10, 11, 12 versus what we have today.
Versus what we do, yeah.
And I think one of the benefits that popped out for me was about that, the access, right? That the, the other grades without this now, if a teacher's going to integrate the technology in the classroom, he or she has to sign up for a cart or a lab and logging in versus having the students having the device and being able to, I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but integrate it in more authentic ways into the instruction around, if I'm a teacher, I can use them for three, five, 10 minutes in a class, have them open them, use them, put them away, and use that appropriately where I might not send out a cart to do that. Or if I did, it might take me that long to log into the cart in order to do those pieces. And not that our carts are bad, I mean, our carts are very good, and we've been very successful with them, as you said. But I think what we're finding is those that have, in the ninth grade, that are using the BYOD approach, they're finding more time in their instruction because the students are more familiar with the devices and are more quick to be able to get into whatever the, the learning is for that, that day. Is that?
The other part was 28% answered the survey, so there's still 72% of the parents that didn't and may have input, even though you ask a child or a 14-year-old, which they prefer, a lot will prefer to be online because they, you know, have access to other things. So at what point do, you know, can parents take a more active role in understanding and be, being able to convey, you know, maybe note-taking on a computer isn't right for them? You know, how can you balance every teacher expecting a student to bring a computer versus some not bringing it, some bringing it? And access, you know, how do you get to those 72% of the parents that didn't give input?
I think that, first of all, the, the opportunity to have an ongoing conversation with parents in May, to get some information from parents and say, look, what input can we gather as we plan forward? That would be helpful. And also, as we started off, part of this, the next stage, as it was for the state, the rollout for ninth grade, is how are we communicating this information to parents? We're brought, we broaden that scope of communicating this information to all parents nine, 12. That would be a part of, of the process that we'd have to, that we want to plan for in the fall. Okay?
And I do want to reiterate, I think the date is May 17th at 9:00 a.m.
Yeah.
That they've invited and doing a grade nine parent networking session so that any of those parents have an opportunity to come and, and obviously add more input. So we're, we're trying to reach out to as many people as possible.
And I just want to add a suggestion. As you transition, and I think we talked about the Moodle, it's not available to parents because you need a login to get in. So I'm wondering if there's a way to make, that's like a textbook in a way, as the textbooks go away and Moodle becomes the curriculum. Just a suggestion, if there's a way to make that accessible to families.
And there is now, and there's a way to make that open now as well. You know, the educators can open that up so that parents could have access to what their children do in the classroom as well. But they do need the login.
Right.
Yeah.
So just email the teachers.
Correct.
Jen?
So I just wanted to thank you for this great presentation. A lot of detail went into this, and I know it's been a lot of work, so we really appreciate it. So I have a freshman and a sophomore at the high school, and it was interesting at the beginning, like in the end of January, I'm like, so how's the BYOD? And he's like, ah, you know, like, didn't really give me a lot of feedback, of course, teenage boy. But, but I sat down and was kind of talking to him through the survey, which I thought was awesome, having these kids do the survey. And it really started getting him thinking and talking about like examples of like, oh yeah, like, you know, in math, we did this. And so it's been really great for him. And my, my sophomore brings his computer to school every day, talks about how the library has been kind of like redone so that all the kids have become a really, I mean, he's a athlete, so he's spending a lot of time doing homework. And so it's been such a great thing for him to be able to take it in and be working on his essays on the Google Docs and, you know, and again, getting that live feedback from teachers, you know, so he can work on it whenever he has a spare chance. So just curious, do you, I know that Jill spoke about you guys going to Greenwich to talk about schools, like, can you just tell me, you know, again, like, you know, I've got, you know, a nephew in Pennsylvania, they all have their own iPads, and, you know, you hear, you know, stories of kids in different school districts having different opportunities. Like in our DRG, are we, you know, can you just give me kind of an inkling on like what other areas around us are doing as far as like having their own device? Are they giving it, the device, at the beginning of the school year?
I think we have similar DRS have, have initiatives where they're trying to broaden the rollout of providing devices for students. Okay? Jill, I'm wondering whether you had some details about?
Sure, I have a couple of things.
Greenwich and Darien, I think which would be helpful for me.
Well, Greenwich, as Jill mentioned, we had a wonderful visit there with the superintendent and other superintendents around the area. And Greenwich is distributing iPads at their elementary levels, and then Chromebooks from the middle school up. So, and they're providing those devices. In Ridgefield, it looks like middle school up, so middle school and high school will be provided with Chromebooks next year?
Yeah.
Is there, Darien is in discussion now around K-12 devices. They may be different between iPads and Chromebooks at different levels, but looking at a K-12. And Westport, two years ago, or was it even this year in the fall?
This year.
Began their nine through 12 BYOD rollout across the school. So it is something that, you know, our, the schools in our DIRG are doing as well, you know, sort of moving around in different ways. The, you know, the models are different around district-supplied versus, you know, individual-supplied as we're doing it. I think the, the graph that showed about 50% of our parents provide, purchased a device for this purpose, and the other 50 did not. Do want to reiterate the fact that we have devices available for families that would, for whatever reason, be unable to provide them, and, and we can go ahead and do that has been the approach. And I do also, just while, while I'm speaking, while And I do also, just while, while I'm speaking, want to reiterate that, you know, people look at this and say, wow, we get to save so much money. But as you heard, the, the Wi-Fi needs, for instance, are now, you know, increasing as we're going through and doing this. And we had the Wi-Fi initiative here at the high school just two years ago. And yet, just in those two years, the technology has changed where now we have a different protocol that's faster and better and, you know, the devices are using more and more and more bandwidth. So there is, there certainly are certain steps that we'll have to take to maintain, you know, in the, the infrastructure. Because as we discussed two years ago and even last year, it is the, the strength of the infrastructure that does have a significant bearing on the success of the program.
Sure.
As we're going through and doing this work. But we are seeing that, that work that we did those years ago, two years ago or so, now we're reaping some of the benefits of that by being able to, you know, use these devices the way that we are and use the Wi-Fi and the network and things. And we'll continue to, you know, keep an eye on that and make sure that that's working well.
Thank you. Penny?
I was wondering if you had any thoughts about what the timeframe would be for rolling this out throughout New Canaan High School?
Our goal?
If you said it, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Our goal would be to roll it out 9-12 in the fall.
This coming fall?
This fall.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I was, it says a majority of students and teachers had positive BYOD experiences. Were there any students for whom it didn't work, you know, who, students who, you know, whose grades kind of precipitously fell for no apparent reason? And if so, kind of what support or what actions would we, as a district, be taking?
I don't have any feedback on a student having a device and that device causing them to having greater difficulties academically.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just looking in that, if you are looking to do this for the fall, and I know that you wanted to have a lot of support for the technical aspects, how is your Tech Expert program going? I mean, because it seems like it'd be natural to have those who excel, and there's plenty of students here who really, this, they thrive on this, that could be provided. And I think students really deal well with other students. So if you've got now four grades that are going to be doing this with more technical problems, you want to have a good force. Where are you with that?
I would say it's going quite well. I think that, I referenced in the slide, that's probably a resource which we want to continue to build out, to provide additional support for, for students that may need it moving forward. The Tech Experts are, they're approachable, they're very knowledgeable, and they're very helpful. And, and, and they've been a great resource in trying to make sure that we troubleshoot things for, for students in a very timely manner. So my goal would be to work with the tech integrators to make sure we can, we can provide that and broaden that moving forward.
And just for clarity, the Tech Experts is a student group?
That's right, yeah.
Led by Tom and Hannah. And they do sort of that first level support, but it's all students and really a great initiative that started, I think, last year.
Yeah, last year.
Just how large is, or, I mean, are we talking about five students, 10, 20? Just gotta get some?
How many?
12, 14.
Those are like level two, those are the real. We're rapidly approaching 1,300 Tech Experts because I see more folks.
Good answer.
So the student did not know how to do something yesterday, Bill, being the person that is helping me today, he'll find out for math and the knowledge is really transferred and transferred and transferred. So when we're getting to the Tech Expert level, they, when we're getting to the Tech Expert level, they really do need the help. I mean, that's, you're, you're kind of stumping the chumps to really kind of figure out how to get a problem going. So it, it's, it's an ongoing process. And just from Tech Night, you saw how many kids participated. I think they're all going to be able to, you know, increase the knowledge just across the board.
One other, so just along that, that's for the student support, for the teachers, because I think the professional learning and, because something new, I mean, is very needed, I think they all would like to have it. Would you be doing programs over the summer so that you start off, or you kind of introduce it all and then they kind of learn on hand? Or get a chance to speak with all the freshman teachers who kind of had experience for a whole, you know, semester or whatever, that can kind of say, look out for this, or do this, or this is how you plan for your lesson?
So much of that has been an ongoing conversation. It's, 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 it's been feedback which we gathered from the pilot from last year, from teachers that, that did the pilot, or you, we learned from their feedback. And I think it's a continuing conversation about how we provide teachers with, with some, some guidance in preparing for the fall, okay?
Maria?
Just to go back to the, the question about student outcomes, and I know we're only two months into this, but will you look at, like, to see if there's any trends between the overall freshman grades, first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, you know, see if there's any impact? And the other thing is, are there any examples or cases where teachers are using technology and the outcome with the students is increasing something, you know, better student outcomes because they did something differently using technology versus something they had done in the past? Are you looking for anything like that, or is that something down the road?
Well, I think what we're looking for is, based on that SAMR model, you know, how is technology really transforming the learning experience? So the conversations we have is, you know, looking at the lessons that are provided by teachers and saying, well, where, where does this fall? Where does this fall in the learning experience for students? Is this, and is this really shifting that learning experience in a fundamental and significant way?
I think we'll also see it as they do progress on the SAMR model, as you mentioned. Spencer, I think, mentioned it about the science project and the science lab. That we'll see it in the opportunities that are provided to our students as far as demonstration of knowledge. You know, they, it shifts a bit, right? Where they're, when they, students have access on the devices as they do, they're, they're learning different types of skills around being discerning consumers of the information that's available to them. They're learning to be responsible producers of, of new information as they're creating new things. They are, they're finding different and more creative ways to sort of almost work interdisciplinarily to pull together different learnings that they may have had to create something new as a learning outcome. So I think one of the things we will be monitoring will be the demonstrations of student knowledge as they go through and what types of, probably more, I would look for more performance-based assessments. I'd look for more authentic and sort of hands-on types of outcomes from students as demonstrations of what they know or are able to do as a result of whatever they're learning. Just another, another measure.
Hazel?
Just wanted to ask, is there, is there any advice that you would give to parents about word processing or old-fashioned typing? Is that something that's helpful to have as a skill? Something they can practice at home? I mean, they're, you can do it on the computer, you don't have to take lessons or anything. It's readily available. Is it helpful to be able to have that facility?
Oh, yeah, it's definitely helpful for students to have that, that skill. That's why we're focusing on those, those typing skills all the way back at the elementary level. And we have typing lessons, whether that's type-to-learn or edu-typing, which we, we deliver starting at the elementary level. Because we know that students have to be proficient in that. We don't want typing to get in the way of the learning process, but, and quite frankly, you see, most students we're seeing is that either they know the traditional home row or they've developed their own method where it just works for them and they, the typing process is not an obstacle to the learning process. But we're making sure that we provide the fundamentals teaching so that students understand, you know, how typing can be, you know, be learned and help them in the learning process.
Okay, I have a question, it's a little bit in the weeds, but, you know, you were talking about how you're getting like charging, or you'll get charging strips in the back so that kids can, and I don't know if you've looked at it, or we already have, or just like charging blocks at the high school so the kids, so they don't have to, you know, stop their lesson, go back to the back of the classroom. Or even, you know, doing kind of how we did the BYOD where we encourage families to, that's one of the things you buy for your kids at the beginning of the year and they have it in their backpack, and then we'll have a store here at the school. I don't know if you've looked at that, or if it's not really practical or too heavy.
One thing we did was try and add charging to the cafeteria. It hasn't really caught on yet.
Okay.
But, but we've added strips of power all throughout the cafeteria that people could bring their devices during the time they're in the cafeteria as well as charge up. But, you know, it's probably not caught on as much as we'd like to see so far.
And in addition to that, we, we do have chargers on loan that the students can borrow from the library, okay? So, and they do, they check them out and they borrow them and they charge up. And we also have charging stations which we purchase for the ninth grade BYOD so that they have these little, little kiosks where they can charge as well. So.
Maybe we'll have to look into, you know, I was out west and I saw all these solar power charging stations outside and. I don't know how that fits in with the beautification, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, hook it up with the beautification.
Thank you.
That's right.
And I'm not sure, because I was just thinking about, you know, how the orchestra group, you know, you rent out instruments, you know, and you have insurance policy for the instrument you use. Technology is changing so quickly. So for, as we kind of go forward, if parents don't want to buy a computer because two years they want to have this other computer and, you know, you don't want to buy it for a short period, would we ever do something like that where we had like a rental with, you know, some tech, I don't know if that even exists, you know, and you just paid insurance and fee rather? So if not somebody who can't afford or whatever, can't do it, you know, in that way, but if they just would like to have an opportunity to buy something that they don't have to commit for because in four years they would, or if they buy it in their middle school, you know, it's a little more cost-effective, or if they want to wait for the next model to come out or something, you know, for a year.
That has not been a conversation we've had yet.
Okay, just?
Yeah.
An idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill and Matt, and I really appreciate.
Thank you very much.
Coming. No, no voting on this presentation. Okay.
And I know you mentioned in the beginning, but Matt just jumped on board in August and has been spearheading this a lot with Bill and Tom and everybody else. And I want to echo the thanks that, you know, as I told him the day before he started, the treadmill doesn't slow down, you just have to run fast enough to catch up to it. And, and they're doing a wonderful job in keeping us right on the path and doing the right work. So it's exciting stuff. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. So I guess, moving on, moving into statement of accounts, Dr. Keating.
Thank you.
So my apologies for just getting the state. Sorry, sorry, Dr.
The statement of account, accounts to you today. We had kind of a short month for our second meeting and I wanted to give you a report that was reconciled with the town, which did happen on Friday. So year-to-date, we are reconciled with the town, which I think is very good news. We're currently 75% through the fiscal year. We have actually expended 67%. We have an additional almost 28% in encumbered. So we have approximately 5% of our budget that's not committed at this time. The, the difference between the 75% of the year being completed and the 67% in expenditures really relates to the timing of payments on salary and certain accounts payable. I mention that because we were questioned about that at the audit committee recently and they're asking about the timing of our expenditures. And that's really what, what that's related to. Many of our teachers get paid over the summer, so we accrue their salaries at year-end rather than expending them. So those, those funds are, are recorded under the encumbered accounts. There are a few transfers in the report that's before you. The first one is for a legal matter that was settled, and the total settlement was for $107,000. $107,000, I said that right? And that particular settlement was really discussed over a number of years. I think it was eight, 10 years. And Gary has more information on that, so I'm going to defer to him to explain that. Sure. Sorry.
So this has been an ongoing legal matter that involves a former employee. This matter has been, been over the last 10 years, believe it or not. We reached a settlement two years ago and we finally got the final documents signed and sealed and delivered. And we paid out that settlement just, just last month.
So just to build on that just slightly is that we are rewriting our encumbrance policy. And included in that encumbrance policy is going to be a section that talks about legal matters and our ability to carry over encumbrances for estimated legal settlements, including litigation costs, beyond one year. So hopefully that'll go before Resource Committee in the next month and we'll have that issue resolved. We learned something from this particular situation that we want to correct. The other transfer before you tonight is $13,000, and that is for recruitment expenses. We have had quite a bit of recruitment this year and needed additional funds. Both of those transfers are coming out of the unallocated line item at this time. Now, having said that, there are accounts that I believe will be underspent as we move towards the end of the year. I've mentioned those to you. I think the sub-account will be underspent, utilities and those kinds of things. As we get into May and June, I'll have a clearer picture of what those numbers are going to be and then actually bump those accounts out, up, so we can kind of pull those, that number back up. There are three other accounts that I'm not putting transfers for through today because there are funds within the objects or the cost centers that will probably have funding available to offset them. So for example, we have the tutoring account under non-salary accounts for special education. It's overbudgeted by 4,800, but the salary account for tutoring is under budget. So there's probably a transfer that can happen between those accounts. And the same thing for OTPT, speech and intervention. There's funds within the salary accounts and the tuition account that can possibly be moved. So I didn't want to start transferring and then having to do another transfer later on in the year, it just didn't make sense. And then finally, we do have some money that's going to be needed for the temporary help account. And again, that is, those are people who come in to fill in vacancies or people who are on leave. So more than likely, we will have funding from those salaries that weren't incurred to transfer in here. But I wanted to mention them because you will be seeing those as minuses as you go through the financial report. Other than that, we are tracking as planned. The balance in the unallocated account now is $617,000, but as I said, I do think that that's going to go up a little. We have received our green light to go ahead with capital projects that were approved by the boards earlier, two months ago. And we're going to start doing that. We have purchase orders already formulated for many of those items. And so I think a lot of those projects, many of them are small, but a lot of those projects will be started and hopefully completed towards the end of June, early July. So we start the year with some really nice projects completed for the district. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Keating. Are there any questions on the statement of accounts? Okay, you know, we've started a new process and it was not included in the agenda. So I would like to ask if I could have a motion to amend the agenda and add to our action items and approval of the transfers within the statement of account for this month. So do I have a motion to allow that? Hazel, second. Sherry. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We'll make sure, once we add this to the, so we'll add this to our action items, which is coming up next. And in, in the future, we'll try to remember to get this into the agenda. Yeah, so. Okay, thank you, Dr. Keating.
So the motion would be to approve the current period transfers?
Right.
Listed in the statement.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't we do that first? So we're going to move on to the action items and I would like to have a motion to approve the current transfers listed in the statement of accounts. Tom, second. Penny, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we, our next item in the action items is the West School PTC donation. I would like to have a motion to approve a donation from West PTC in the amount of $22,528.20 for the purpose of lunchroom tables, both regular and ADA compliant. Sherry? Brendan, second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. The next motion, or the next action item on the agenda is the approval of the, a donation from the New Canaan High School PFA as part of the New Canaan High School Beautification Project in the amount of $10,000 for the purpose of grounds irrigation. May have a motion for that approval. Maria, second. Hazel, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, comments from the?
Just one question.
Yes.
I voted in favor of it. Can you just give us a little bit more background on the lunchroom tables?
Yeah, I, I would agree that.
I'm just, I'm just sort of surprised.
I know.
It sort of seems like something the district should provide, lunchroom tables.
Yes.
Yep.
So I'm great, but I'm sure there's an explanation.
Yes.
And I just thought maybe we could-
And you know, I usually do that. It's like, I'm trying to get back into my Robert's rules. It's like one of these awkward things, like, I don't really know what this is, but all right, so.
No, I, I am happy that you asked that question. Thank you. I received a letter from Janet Lee and Katrina Parkhill. If you don't mind, I'll read that, which will bring some sort of color to it all. So it's, it's actually, "Dear Jan, as a result of the incredible generosity of the West parent community, the West PTC is proud to donate new cafeteria tables for the West School lunchroom. Total cost of the 16 tables is $22,528.20, and they're requesting the Board of Ed approval. We're very excited about this project as it is the second phase of our lunchroom redesign, which is a platform for promoting a healthy school climate and showcasing our core school values. After thorough research and a collaborative process with you, we've selected tables which are octagonal in shape. These new tables will, will encourage all children to interact, leading to a more inclusive lunchtime experience and a more enriching school climate. 14 of the tables are regular table measurements, and two will be ADA compliant to accommodate the needs of the school now and in the future. The entire project has been many months of collaboration between the administration, faculty, students, and the PTC. We're so thankful for your partnership in making our lunchroom the best it can be. We're confident will be a sentimental and inspiring landmark for West School students for generations to come." The excitement is that, as you recall, a year ago, there was, they were painting the mural in the lunchroom, and the difference that that has made. And they see, this is a face, too. I met with Jan and Katrina. We spoke about it a bit, and they have very specific vision for that space. And so they really feel strongly that this is an appropriate donation for them, because they want to provide, they want to provide the tables in, in a way that does help to enhance the school climate, set up an, an environment where students, instead of the rectangular tables by going in the octagon, they'll be looking at each other, working with each other more, more collaborative space. And they feel that this is, it's an important next step for them. So I'm very much supportive of their, of their great efforts to do this.
Send this picture once we have them in their action.
With students interacting, absolutely.
I think that sounds great. Thank you.
It is.
Does anybody else have any more discussion topics on this, or, okay. All right, thanks. And I guess I'll just, you know, throw Robert's rules out and go for the description last time, too. We always have this debate back and forth, because I don't like it either. I like to know the details beforehand. Okay, moving on to comments from the public. Does anyone know? I, all right, so we can move to announcements and future business. Dr. Lettsi.
Yes, I would just like to take a moment to share with the board that we are in conversation with our new landlord at 39 Locust Avenue to do some renovations to that space and to the office areas that are there. The renovations would include safety, efficiency, and facility improvements. And our scheduling currently would put it in July. I will have more information for you very soon as we continue our conversations with the landlord and work out the details around the lease. But I wanted you to know that this, these conversations are moving forward, that the landlord, the owner of the building, is excited to be working with us in this way. And I also want you to know, it would not be a capital project or anything along those lines, what we'd be looking to do. The landlord would be looking to finance the changes, the renovations that we're looking for, again, with that focus on safety and the efficiency of the space, and some facilities improvements, which really is a euphemism for running water on the third floor. And, and then we'd look at, through the rental agreement and through lease, and the, the financing of that, how that would work out. So I'll have many more details once I have the specifics, but I wanted you to know that we're having this discussion with the, the owner of the building. As you recall, the building sold recently, and the new owner has been committed to, he's replaced the roof, he's done some work in the parking lot, he's done the work underneath the building in the garage, and he is committed to renovating that space in a way that makes it really appropriate and efficient and effective for our Board of Education offices. And we're, we're excited to talk about this, share this with you, since it's, would be the first time since 1992 that such a, any renovation in that space would occur. So I want to share that with you. We have our, our next meeting, the board's next meeting will be May 2nd. And at that meeting, we will have a workshop where some committees will be able to share out progress and report on things that are happening there. And then, you know, believe it or not, the next meeting would be our, our middle of May already, as we move into the spring. So, thank you.
Okay. So just a reminder to all committee chairs, that, that May 2nd workshop is your night to shine, so, anyway. Okay, could I get a motion to adjourn? Jen, second. Tom, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.